Eighty-five sixty-three. Okay, so. So twenty-twenty-two taxes. So I guess Jackie is working for a motion to agree to the abatement of eighty-five sixty-three for account number seven sixty-four.
So move.
All favor. Do you have something else as well?
Well, I just wanted to, while I was here in person and not on.
Zoom.
Zoom. I wanted to say a couple of other things, just to get it out there. I believe that I will be ready to implement the revaluation when we do the taxes. I was talking to Suzette about maybe doing the taxes sometime in August, later August. If you guys want me to, I'll be ready at that point. Couple of things, nonprofits. I believe that Cobbs Cook will have to be tax exempt. As I told you before, when I was here last time, I kind of suggested to them that in many of my other towns, they pay a fee in lieu of taxes. And I just wanted to kind of introduce them to that idea. And they said, well, they like to do little projects and things instead. But with your permission.
What's you're talking about?
Huh?
Cobbs Cook Shores?
Yes. I would like to, with your permission, even though it's, you know, it's not. I'm not officially the one to do that, but I would like to just tell them again that they are nonprofit. But, you know, that they may, we would like them to consider that, that would be a nice thing. And then in some of my other towns, or all my other towns, even the state of Maine does a, in St. Ben, they even do a payment lower taxes. So it would be nice. I don't know if it would do anything but. And the other one, New England Aquarium, never got back. So as far as I'm concerned, they're taxable. And I believe the place is for sale.
Their house, their house on Main Street? You're talking about, their house on Main Street?
Uh, it's on, yeah, it's up to one of the.
Main Street.
Yeah, yeah. So, then it will get back to us. Summer Keys does not qualify. Landmark did, Cobbs Cook Teaching Center did, but they're a small, small potato. So that's pretty much where we are. I consulted with a friend of mine who used to be the head of main revenue, property tax division. And he, I had him look at Cobbs Cook Shores. And he agreed that, he showed me a case, a law case that pretty much sank that boat. So.
I think we were shown the same.
I was a little disappointed. I was hoping I could be the big hero, but I'm not gonna be.
What about Maine Heritage?
Maine what?
Maine Heritage, Nerrontown.
Maine Heritage?
Heritage Trust.
Oh, yeah, they're a 501(c), and they're also a land trust. And land trusts have been pretty much given, the nonprofit charitable laws have gotten so relaxed that, you know, they just pretty much take land trusts without, without questioning them.
Do you have a dollar amount of lost taxes for those?
I believe I, I did, and I can give it to you.
Send it through.
Yeah, I will give it to you. I think, don't quote me on this, but I think this year was, I believe it was $2 million for Cobbs Cook, which would be about, what, fifty thousand? When I write them, I had planned to put that in there, because I haven't got the full values yet for this year. So that may, it may increase by quite a bit.
I think all total, the last time I heard the number, it was about, what, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, Carol?
Lost taxes.
Yeah.
Everything together, yeah.
Yeah, the whole.
Yeah, so, you know, it would be good. I'll do a, I'll do a new total once we're done with this whole thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that I heard from quite a few people that had unfinished properties that Jim told them they didn't have to pay taxes on unfinished properties. And that is not the case. And that is not gonna be the case.
Unfinished property.
Yeah, if your house wasn't finished, that, don't worry, you weren't gonna pay taxes till it was finished.
There you go.
And that, so I told them that that wasn't gonna happen. And one guy told me he was gonna sue me. And I said, well, you can start right now, because I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not changing the law. So you guys may hear some complaints about that, but that's the law, you know? I'm not gonna anger the law. But I heard it from several people, not just one. So, so that's the deal on that.
Can you answer just a question for me in that topic?
Yeah.
Where in the process of building does it become a taxable entity? Just from, from my own understanding, from when these people come, like, what is an incomplete house that you're taxing on? Like walls up, roof on, like?
Well, the thing is, the thing is that you, there's a chart.
Okay.
For, you know, this is a house at a hundred percent, and then you take off this percent for everything that's not done.
Okay.
So, for example, if somebody has a slab.
Right.
And they don't have any house. Probably would, could still, could still tax them for a slab, according to when it was put in, you know? So you're getting valued at, you know, fifteen hundred dollars instead of nothing. But, but to say that you're not going to tax somebody till it's finished, you know?
Just wanted to understand the way you had, when the.
Right, right. So, so.
Jane had a question.
Yeah.
Your audience.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to ask why Summer Keys was not taxable?
It's not a nonprofit.
Summer Keys, they're not, they're not a 501(c), and they're a profit-making organization.
Okay, all right.
They're gonna go through the hoops to be a.
You know, I'm sure they're, they got a good cause and all that stuff. But you can't just, you know, the way for somebody like that to get help would be to ask, get a petition, go to town meeting, ask the town to donate, ask if the town will donate whatever thousand dollars they wanted. And let the people vote at town meeting. It is not, it is not to be done through taxation where people don't have, you know, where they don't meet the criteria. So.
They don't have a board or anything.
Right. And if they're, if they're a money-making proposition, they're a money-making proposition.
You had another question?
No.
I just wanted to ask Jackie, when is, of course, the tax, doesn't take effect until maybe next year? But a lot of people did that rebate paperwork, I don't think it's called rebate. But are their taxes still gonna be a back price or is it a new price?
All right, so the taxes are taking effect this year. The value, the new valuations will go into effect in August or whenever we do the taxes. So in answer to your question, the first year, your taxes will be the same as last year.
Yeah.
But the program is ended. It was a one-year, a one-shot deal. It was poorly constructed, and it was way more money than they could have possibly imagined. So it is out. But it is important for people to realize that they have increased some other programs. One of the things that I would want people to pass around is that when you make out your income tax this year, your state of main tax, even if you don't owe any money, and you don't make any income, fill it out anyways. Because over a certain percentage of whatever you have for income, if your, if your tax bill is, say, six percent or more of your income, then the state has increased that program so they can, they can give you money for it. So the money goes to people that, that need the money. That's number one.
So you're saying last year, we, a bunch of us did, I was involved. And you're saying that that's not going to apply, that got wiped out?
This, this year is it. You're gonna get, you're gonna get a tax bill this year, the same as last year, if you qualify. All right, no matter what, I value your property at. But that's the end of it. Next year, your tax bill will go back to the normal, like everybody else's, that will jump to whatever it is. It was a one-year program. It wasn't meant as a one-year program, but it was flawed from the beginning. So it just, it just cost way more than anybody ever expected it to. And it has major flaws in it, like for example.
Kind of like a scam, yes.
Kind of like what?
A scam.
Well, I think what happened was that the people that put it into, the people, the legislative body that passed it, passed it because it was an election year. And, and they didn't want to be the bad guy that said this is a bad idea. And so they didn't put in the safeguards in it, like income. And I have, in one of my towns, I have these people that were living in a camper on their property. They qualify, they bought a brand-new double-wide, and their taxes were for a $10,000 camper on a piece of property. And so it didn't take into allowance if you improved your property, or if you moved, or if you went from a trailer on a side street to a piece of shore frontage. Your taxes would stay the same. It, 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 it was, it was just, it was just too impossible.
So, just to clarify, so this year, those of us who, well, everybody qualified, you're old.
Right, right.
Our tax statement will be next, last year's tax rate.
Right.
But will we have the information in regards to what our reevaluation is to get ready for next year?
Yeah, that's exactly, that's my question. Unfortunately, the way Trio did it, because I did some tax bills yesterday. What they did was they, there's no explanation on your bill. Your bill will be the same as it was last year. And it will say stabilization on the bottom.
Right.
But it won't say, which I was hoping it would. Your bill would have been a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we need it.
But you gotta bill for eight hundred. So it means that everybody's gonna call and say, what, what?
So do, so when the reevaluation happens, as happened or is almost completed in our town, and even though there is a stabilization component, would homeowners be notified of what the new value of their home is? Or would they just find out by attack, you know, contacting the tax office? Or can we do something that would send everybody, even if it was some expense to us?
Well.
Can we send a letter prepping people for what next year's gonna be?
People who are in the stabilization program.
Well, the problem, here's the problem, is two problems in my book about that. I did think about that, whether to send something out ahead of time, or whether to. The problem is, is that if we had sent, if I had sent letters out to everybody right now saying what the valuation was going to be, it would have scared the pants off everybody. Because you don't, the person is gonna look at it at this mill rate.
Right, and it's gonna be different.
Right, and it's going to the mill rate, hopefully, and.
Hopefully, yeah.
Hopefully, unless the town spends more money, a lot more money, the mill rate is going to drop considerably. So I would rather have people get the bill, see the mill rate.
Right.
Then, feel free to call me and ask me what the real valuation is, and I'll tell you. But that way.
Okay. That makes sense.
You don't get to panic.
Yeah, won't be panic.
The commitment is available online, the Pick Town website.
Yes.
Will that show the current numbers as you're completing the letter? Right now, it shows the assessment.
I think it will, I think it will. I don't know, I haven't actually, I've only done one commitment I actually saw, because the, the other one I did the other day was sent out to be, you know, processed somewhere else. I think it will show the valuation, but it won't show, it won't show the amount. It will just say stabilize for this year. So, but I think that the land and buildings should be the correct amount on there. But I'm not sure, not positive on that. But like I said, we can, I got no problem calling people and telling them what it is, or having them call me. And I will spell it out to them.
Thank you very much, Jen. Do you have any other questions?
I do. Can we go back to your comments on Cobbs Cook? You mentioned there's a potential $2 million loss in tax revenue, is that what I'm?
Two billion dollar valuation of the property.
Couple of million dollars worth of valuation, I believe, is what it was. I should have prepared the numbers, but I will, I will have them for you another time after we know what the full valuation is.
In other towns, you've had some success getting some form of compensation?
Yeah.
Is it a nominal amount, or what are we talking?
Well, it's usually, like on Vinylhaven, I worked in Vinylhaven for ten years, and they had a lot of nonprofit land, not quite as much as you guys. But it was usually equivalent to a open space deduction, which I think is fair. I thought that was what open space was for. I thought, to me, that made sense. That if you, if you allow people to go on the land, and you have it permanently protected, and you, you know, that you get this much off, you know, you can get up to as much as ninety-five percent off the valuation. I thought that's what it was designed for, and unfortunately, it's, you know, a lot of these organizations are bypassing that option and just saying, which act exempt, that's the way it is. See you later. So, but I was surprised that the state of Maine is, is, is sending money to St. Ben. I was really surprised.
Well, let's ask, wasn't there, wasn't Wiltool asked to work on something with the state to compensate these small towns that are in this?
I did do that, and the board tried to do that, what, four years ago, Carol? And he never got to it, COVID hit. And just so people know, the towns can't control this. This is a state mandate. We cannot stock nonprofit, buying, they can buy three-quarters of the town in Lebact.
Yeah.
We have nothing to say. State mandate. So my idea was, let the state pay us for it.
But that hasn't happened yet.
No, no.
But there, there is a group of people that are, are, in one of my towns, them are trying to organize people to go after the state legislature and say, you gotta tighten up these rules. Because, you know, we're getting hammered.
Yeah, I am gonna call.
They tabled, they tabled that last year, there was a proposed law.
Well, they keep, from what I understand, they keep tabling, because they know the problem.
Right.
They're just all afraid to sit at the table and go, okay, we'll solve it right now, let's take care of it, let's get some. Small towns are great, I mean, it's, because it's not that simple. But they really just.
Well, it's like with tree growth, the tree growth on the waterfront, you know, we went, it was a bunch of us that tried to get them to stop having tree growth within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the shore. Because, let's face it, if you're, if you got ocean frontage, you ain't cutting trees to, you know, to, to harvest the land. You're cutting, you're doing it to give yourself a break. And Vinylhaven had that problem terribly. And the legislature was like, well, we'll, we'll, thanks for coming, we'll, we'll think about it. And then, you know, hear from them again. But there is some movement in that direction, because it is getting pretty ridiculous. I mean, Lebact is, is probably got more nonprofit land than any other town that I've worked for.
Sixty-eight, last I knew, sixty-eight.
Amazing.
Interestingly enough, Jackie, Renee and I have just been on this committee of municipal budgets and how they play with the nonprofits and with conservation land, and how it affects all that stuff. And we, we had lots of big, big players on this. College professors, they did an incredible amount of work researching this. And there is no definite answer, because it weighs on both sides. You know, sometimes, if you get a park-like situation like Cobbs Cook Shores, you also get the other benefits from increased tourism and all that stuff.
Sure.
And that's true in this town. However, in this town, it's almost like the town now has to catch up with the tourists. Because we're not, we don't have that many restaurants, we don't have that. So it's, it's a very complicated issue.
It is.
And there is no easy answer.
And the poor, the poor people are paying for it.
Huh?
The poor people are paying for it.
Well, yeah, it's spreading, it's being spread about by less people. And, you know, it, it's according to where you are in it and how you feel about it. And, you know, I know in Vinylhaven, they, they've had this fight for years. And it's, I just think one of the answers is maybe, you know, understanding the town's position and being cognitive of it, and maybe. And maybe meeting them halfway. Right. Or, or a little ways. And, and that's what I thought.
You would.
Maybe when I send them this letter, maybe I just kind of say.
Taxes and.
You know, why don't you talk to the town?
I like the, I like the money, because like a donation or fixing the airport is one thing, but like giving us actual money.
To show how complicated it is, we, Renee, at one time, a few years ago, we bought a new fire truck that held a lot of water, and, because we didn't always have that. And the rationale was that, should there be a fire on Cobbs Cook Shores, on one of these parks, and the fire, the truck goes out there, there's no fire hydrant, there's nothing. So you'll have to carry it on your truck. Renee, very smart, they called up Cobbs Cook Shores and many other people who were located on this land and said, how about donating? Like, this is where you're, so that was smart, and that was a good plan.
And did you get response?
Yes.
From quite a few, I think, right?
You know, Cobbs Cook donates a thousand dollars a year to Public Works and a thousand dollars a year to Fight On. So one of all these got.
Oh, yeah, so you're getting, so you're getting some, you know, the airport. Well, I mean, Cobbs. She told me about the airport, not to pick on them, but the airport was kind of self-serving, because they use these. It's like, oh, okay, that was.
The people of Lebact are not flying their jets.
To be honest, Cobbs Cook, at least they invest money into their properties.
Right.
There's a whole lot of new profits here that, and nothing, zero.
Very true.
They grabbed the land just to have it, and they don't want anybody to use it, don't want anybody on it. Cobbs Cook Shores, they keep everything.
Signage, and they're very open about it. I will, I will agree.
And they, and.
Just to let you know.
But I will reach out to Bucket Davis.
To what?
Bucket Davis.
Oh, okay.
And I'll get with him and see if we can have a statement.
Oh, yeah, I work for East Metchaus, I heard the Davis, but I didn't hear the bucket part.
It's the only way I know him.
Yeah, the only way I know him too, bucket.
You need to get the representatives in York County and Cumberland County, that's stopping it. It's when they go to the state, those counties don't have the space for somebody to put in acres of non-tax land, because all that land is taken taxed already, and they do not want to share the expense of Arusta County and Washington County's loss of taxes. That's what stopped it in the state.
But they want to enjoy it.
That's what stopped it in the state last year, though, the York County and the Cumberland County representatives, those are the ones who stopped it, because they don't want to invest that money in the rest of the state.
So the only other thing I wanted to bring up was that this, this, when the tax bills go out, I just want to warn you, it is gonna get messy. Because we went to twelve-hundred houses, we left cards at twelve-hundred houses. I heard from more than I thought I would. But after the tax bills go out, and you see your assessment has doubled, then you're gonna want to call me and tell me what you got, and I'm gonna want to, and I'm gonna fix it. But we're going to have abatements and supplements, and we're gonna have, you know, all that stuff. And I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
So what percentage do you think you got response from? Like, how many people are gonna be like, I never saw the notice, I never knew, like?
Definitely.
Like thirty percent of the homes?
Probably, maybe, maybe thirty, I don't know. We, we probably, I probably, I got into more houses than I thought I would. I probably got into forty percent.
Okay.
And I probably heard from another twenty or thirty percent. And then you have the rest. And of course, some of them were summer people, so that.
And some people won't object.
So that the, the postcard I put in their door flew away with that one snowstorm we had.
We have a question in the back.
Yeah.
Just one question, just to clarify for myself. When you say nonprofit, meaning a 501(c) or a 503(c)?
Yeah, they don't, even if it's a 501(c), it's not necessarily.
So that includes churches.
Well, churches have a whole different.
But they don't pay property tax either, do they?
If it's an active church, it does not. The parsonage pays everything over twenty percent. The church is only exempt for the actual church worship place itself.
So they are taxed for the property they're on?
Not the property they're on, but say you own, the church owned, like, say there was a church camp, for example, or something. It might not be tax exempt. The house of worship and twenty percent off the parsonage, if, if the minister is actually in the parsonage. You have one parsonage here that Summer Keys was using, it's not tax exempt. Okay?
Just clarifying.
So.
All right.
We're good. Thank you so much for coming, it's great to see you in person.
Thanks. Jackie, we'd like you to keep blood off the street. Blood off the street, Jackie. I'll try, I'll do my best. Look forward to August.
So we're gonna, like, most of the court assessors meeting?
So move, I'll second.
All over. So we're gonna open the select board meeting now, and I need a motion to sign a warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sleeping.
It's your first time, it's okay.
You gotta get the flow.
Get a few notes and hand papers and anything else. So then, you're on. While we're signing.
While we're signing.
No warrants.
No warrants. A motion to include the minutes of July fifth, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Go to second.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor? All right. We have, I'm gonna skip to the first new business, because I know we've probably gotta go back to work. Victor's here patiently waiting to get his liquor license approved from Fisherman's Board. Do we have? Nothing's changed.
Usual questions, nothing changed?
All the same.
All the same, so we have a motion to accept the.
I move we accept it.
Go to second.
Second.
All in favor? So we're gonna sign it in ink, do we have the original?
Yeah.
And stuff I can get tomorrow, is okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, so, all set. Thanks a lot. Interesting assessor meeting, I think. Pretty impressive. So you're gonna have four links, so don't sign it without four links. You got four links, if I want? And we can go back to old business, Alver, we, Alver, we had accepted the low bid for Donovan Manhole Cover bid. And I spoke to the lady at Alver, and she, she thought that, that that one section was a little high, but that's because he explained to us that it had something to do with paving, paving over it. So she had, she had no problem, they had no problem with the, with the bid. So we won't be formally accept the bid now, because it was accepted contingent on their approval.
Right.
So so are you in St. Ben? Do we need another motion meeting? I think we made a motion subject to their acceptance, and they approved the bid, so we should be good for that. Public Works equipment purchase. Okay, so, gave to my attention that there's quite a bit of overgrowth on the roads, especially on North Blueback Road. And the piece of equipment that has teeth that grinds the side of the road, I don't know the technical term.
Multiflucture.
Needs new teeth or needs to have teeth sharpened. I'm thinking that if we had one set sharpened and one set to work with, we would always have, like, one to rotate.
Somebody's way beyond that. Yeah, you can't, you can't sharpen.
Oh, you can't sharpen.
No.
Okay, so you had gone down to Dickie, you'd gone down, and you said it was like six thousand for?
Well, for a big package of multiple things, what we need, what we need for the multi-tube.
Well, for a big package of multiple things, what we need, what we need for the multa to, uh, put this back on with, with the right teeth is, is 4,700. Uh, my question, and the purpose of bringing this to you for, for the slum to review, is where we could actually take the, uh, the funds from and actually pay for this, rather than taking it completely out of the budget, whether or not you would approve for, out of the equipment reserve for that amount of money?
Right, that's what I understood, it's like, I believe there's 30,000 in the equipment reserve. You need the select board's approval to spend that so we can get the teeth.
Rather than take the hit on the, the full budget.
I don't want to start before we've been going down meetings, spend your budget already. Do I have a motion that we would-
I'm doing that we- I'll make a motion, we prove the 4,700 dollars of the equipment pump for the teeth. Then there's another, how much is the rest, Dickie, for the, the rest of the bikes?
If we, 400.
400 dollars.
To, to get every, I mean, everything you had.
Two separate things.
You're right.
Okay, so, can we do that? Yes, definitely. So, you want to make both motions?
I made a motion to accept the, the 4,700, I didn't all make a motion to accept.
We're gonna have a second.
Second, I'll second the first. All in favor? And now your second motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the 1200 for the other parts.
And that's coming out of the new budget?
It's coming out of the equipment pump.
We said that idea, that new budget, okay.
Go on, second. I'll, I'll second. All in favor? So, well, since that's just starting out, I think, you know, it would be really good. Instead of saying, so, it would be really good if we start out by like actually saying the motion, all, the whole motion, so she can write it down. That would be, we should try to do that.
Carol, while we're on this multa thing, can we, especially like with the North Lebat Road, or any road, people need to understand that when we come down, mulch and trim trees, cut, cut the sides of the road back, that there's gonna be people that is not going to be happy about trees being trimmed, bushes being cut off of the right-of-ways of the road. We've had, over the past fall, people posting other people's property, "Please don't cut the trees, and don't do this, and don't do that." Just, I want to get it so it's on TV, that everybody knows that we are gonna be trimming trees, and we are gonna be cutting bushes, and people is not gonna be happy about it. But there's nothing we can do about it, it's costing a lot of money and, and vehicle expenses and-
Oh, it's bad, because, you know, I-
It's not, we're not doing nothing malicious, it's, it's just-
It's, it's costing us 15,000 dollars.
It looks kind of, uh, like, you know, uh, the Loch Ness monsters come through. But, you know, after a few months, it grows and it then looks fine.
I was gonna say, actually, I was gonna say, I drove down, uh, Boot Cook recently. It actually looked beautiful. I mean, now there's, now granted, yes, when you went by, it looked like, uh-
Well, and, and I mean, the purpose of it is-
Takes a while for it to look good.
If we went out and tried to do it right now, there's so much sap and, and everything in the trees, and it's just, it's like trying to cut rubber.
Oh, I'm glad you brought North Lebat up there.
So it's just to the point that, the main purpose of trimming is the time of year that we do do it, so.
Right, and the thing is, that turnout up there, we turned it over to a nonprofit as part of the island. You know, they were gonna use that, they're gonna build stairs, they're gonna do this. You can't even see an island off that turnout. So to get, to get that all cut out of there, it looks, I've been up there 32 years, and I've never seen that look worse. So you're never supposed to be overseeing that, a non-profit.
Damn, Boo is overgrown North Lebat, terribly.
So you're saying that because it's all sap and all that, you're not, it's not gonna be done now? It's not the ideal time to do it, by the way?
It's not the ideal time to do it. Come, once, once the fall time, once the fall-
So what about cutting it, chainsaws and chipping, we don't have the manpower for it.
We don't.
Which is why we have interim position on the next item of agenda. That's true, too. So we're going to discuss, or, oh, Ed, sorry.
I have a question about the multa, how long are those teeth going to last?
Hopefully, a little longer than the first set. Part of the problem on the first set was some of mine, my doing, but the overgrowth is so bad, you can't tell where the rocks are or-
But did it last a year? Is this gonna be an, an annual expense, is what I'm getting at?
There's always going to be an annual expense in this, but I'm hoping that instead of going through like, what we're doing, doing right now, is we will appropriately put it in the budget.
Well, and I, I'd also like to add, Dickie, that those roads have not had any ditching or anything come back over 30 years, I mean, 40 years. I'm gonna say 30, 40 years.
Yeah.
It's a lot, it's a, it's a massive.
Doodles. He's an orthodontic worker. So, uh, one question to answer, on the, on the teeth procurement, we're going to go to Public Works interim position. So, my understanding that we have, and we all know we have one very important person out of Public Works for a very good reason on working's comp, and when you're on working's comp, that, that pays for mostly their salaries. So we have a salary line that we can dedicate to an interim position. We certainly want him to come back and get healthy and return, but it's, we, I just don't see how Dickie and Timmy are doing, getting anything done, you know, it's just, what, do we have 26 miles of road or 36?
36.
And some of it, some of it's dirt, though, right?
We have 13 dirt roads.
So, we have come up, Suzette pulled out a description, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. We want, we want to literally post this, like, immediately.
Hey, great idea.
So it's Public Works, I did read, I did read it myself. Had you read it?
I think it's relatively corporate one I've seen.
Yes, it's just standard Public Works.
You don't have class B.
Yeah, I can have a class B driver's license, complete name and this required training, he's subject to random drug testing, but we want to, we want to post this openly and all put it in the paper.
You have a class A, right?
Salary's subject to experience, so it's flexible, a little slightly flexible. And of course, you, you will be brought in on hiring, to interview them as well. Do I have a motion that we would, uh?
I'll make a motion that, that post the Public Works interim position as soon as possible.
I will second that we post the interim position.
Listening, all in favor? Okay, you don't have to repeat it for the second. Don't let me use my gavel. So that's very good. Shorelantoni Alex.
Yes.
Finally with sighs of relief, is this done? He's been working on this.
I really hope so, I really hope so.
Jumped right into politics, didn't you?
Yeah.
Right on the right chair of the planning board. Do you have anything to explain, something you want to say, other than?
Well, as you all know, you know, the, the planning board had, um, had, um, made suggestions to amend the language regarding a setback from 75 feet to 100. So we put that in there, and then after a public hearing, we, the board removed that language, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'm glad that it wound up the way that it did. So the only changes made here in this-
For the state.
Are, are the ones mandated by the DEP to come into compliance. And, um, you know, there's been some back and forth with that version after we got it from the DEP between, um, town's attorney then, or someone working, yeah. So, um, it shouldn't be all good. I think you guys approve it for the warrant, it gets voted on, and then the DEP refuses it again after that to make sure it's all, you know? And so if there's anything, you know, typos and things like that, that will come back to us, you know, amend those upon, on their, you know, recommendation.
Thank you for all that hard work, too.
Really, thanks a lot.
It was hard work, fed up more than you could share.
It was a little bit, and I, I'm sure, I'm sure I'm gonna see it again over some fashion or another, so.
Well, you're on the Congress of Plan Committee, aren't you?
Yes, yeah.
Well, there you go, there's your next job.
You'll see a few more times, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So do we need a motion to accept this ordinance, or it's just gonna go to one town?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. No, okay, can I make one more statement?
Yes, sure.
The planning board is still, um, one member short, an associate, member, extra member. And so we're, are still looking for someone to step up, who would ideally take on the role of secretary. I've been doing the secretary as well, so, and I'm content with that. Just, we do need to have someone at some point.
It's really hard, it's hard to be secretary and chair at the same time.
So we need a town volunteer for the planning board?
Didn't she move?
Yeah, yeah, so.
What kind of a commitment is the planning board, just so folks know?
Oh, once a month, once a month meeting, yeah. So the, and the secretary would just essentially be doing minutes. And I think we, the, the previous board had approved a $35 payment toward them.